Okay, everybody. I want to welcome you on behalf of our City Council to our very exciting meeting tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll have a roll call by our Assistant City Clerk, Amanda Lee. Down here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cody Campbell. And then the invocation is Viker Paul Martin from Faith Lutheran Church. And so we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we begin by saying thank you. Thank you for your many and wonderful blessings that you give each of us in our daily lives. We thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for friendships. And we thank you for your limitless mercy and grace. In the Scriptures, you remind us that you have established authorities to promote peace and order and justice. We pray for the leaders in all countries in our world, that in these troubling times you grant them wisdom and the abilities necessary to be instruments of peace and healing. We pray for those in the military and all in harm's way throughout the world, that you would send your holy angels to watch over them and to bring them safely home. We pray for our mayor, for all of the city officials, for this Vista City Council meeting, and all others who are gathered here. We ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid all of the conflicting interests and issues presented, a sense of the true needs of our people and our community, a desire for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And Lord, we pray that you give them peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Vista. May your will be done in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Viker Martin. Vicker. Say that right. Okay. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. Next on our general -- on the agenda is the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the approval of the agenda, the publishing of the agenda, we have an addition, which is Exhibit C -- Exhibit 1, excuse me, of Consent Calendar Item C5, which is the appointments of the youth commissioners. It's been revised to add two members, which are Casey Frame and Kennedy Monteroza for appointment to the commission.
Thank you. There was no closed session held today. And the next thing on our agenda are our presentations. And so will Dr. Devin Bodezchka, Superintendent of Vista Unified School District, join me at the podium to accept a proclamation declaring October 2014 as Ride Share Month and Wednesday, October 8th, as Walk and Bike to School Day. So, "Whereas, the month of October is Ride Share Month and Wednesday, October 8th, is Walk and Bike to School Day. Whereas reducing peak period traffic congestion and providing alternatives to driving alone improve the environment by decreasing vehicle emissions, including greenhouse gases, and are key components of the region's quality of life. Sand Egg sponsors Ride Share Week 2014 from October 6th through the 10th. It's a national week-long event to promote carpooling, vanpooling, public transit, teleworking, walking, and biking to work and school. Sand Egg also sponsors Ride Share Month during October 2014 through its i-commute program and encourages employers to provide employees sustainable transportation choices to help reduce traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions in the San Diego region. Walk and Bike to School Day 2014 is an event that increases the number of children safely walking and biking to school while raising awareness of the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking. Whereas Sand Egg's i-commute program is sponsoring the regional Walk and Bike to School Day through its School Pool program called Walk, Ride, and Roll to School Campaign. This is an event that increases the number of children safely walking and biking to school while raising awareness of the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking. So now therefore, the mayor and members of this Vista City Council encourage employers to offer incentives to employees to use alternatives to driving alone throughout the year and do hereby proclaim October 2014 as Ride Share Month and Wednesday, October 8th, as Walk and Bike to School Day in the city of Vista." So congratulations, I guess, on that. And you can -- maybe you have something you'd like to say about that?
There we go. Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, members of the city of Vista, and esteemed audience. This proclamation means a lot to the school district. We really appreciate your support in promoting safe travel to and from our schools. And we also appreciate the focus on working together to do that. The environmental benefits, the health benefits are significant for the students. This is another great example of wonderful collaboration between the city of Vista and the school district. And so I thank you on behalf of our students and on behalf of our community.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the city clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And today we have items C1 through C9 that are on our consent -- so C10, actually.
C11.
So C11 that are on our consent -- C12. Holy cow, women. Can't count, huh? So, C1 through C12 are on our consent calendar. So, would anybody like any of those items removed? C4? C4 and C10. So I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
I can second it.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next item we'll talk about is C4, which is Alta Vista Gardens Fall Fun Festival Special Event Signs. And so, Councilmember Campbell pulled that one. So would you like to lead it off?
Sure. You know, my concern on this item, and the city manager and I have discussed this at length in the past on other signs that go on our 4x4 sign locations throughout the city, is that, quite frankly, they're not readable from a distance. When you're driving by at a slow speed or even stopped at the adjacent corner of the intersection, you can't read more than half of the signs that we've had that go up. You know, this sign, you know, if anybody in the audience could read this, this is about the equivalent size for the first row in the audience that the signs are on the corner of the opposite intersection. All you see is Free Fall Fun Festival. You don't know where, you don't know when, you don't know what. So I'd like to make sure that going forward, we're able to make these signs much clearer, much simpler, so that people in the community can actually get what the message is as they're driving by, and we can have a bit more effectiveness from these signs.
Okay. So, any other comments on that?
I think I pushed a button.
Okay. The buttons are all strange here today. So, okay, Councilmember Coles, and then did you push it?
Yeah, that's right. I'll wait.
I had this conversation as well with our city manager, and I think it's a good suggestion. The question is, do we have any guidelines for submission of these signs when somebody makes a request?
Actually, we do. We have a brochure that we provide to new proposers to use our 4x4 banners or the 4x4 signs or the overhead banners. We are in the process of revising that. We send out an annual calendar to the incumbents who use the space to look at the timing and schedule. And those incumbents will be receiving the new and revised guidelines that will be more specific about size of lettering, number of words, things that need to be bold, and so that we can do a better job going forward of enforcing, making sure that the signs are readable, not just for the poster, but when they're actually put in those intersections.
And I see this as almost a help to the people who are getting the permit to put up the signs. I mean, they're going to that trouble expense or whatever to get the signs, and if it's really not that helpful for -- to promote their event, you know, everybody loses out. So I think it's a good opportunity to make it readable, clear, and useful.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I was just going to say, I mean, that all makes sense, but I guess this is next month, so can we just make a motion to approve?
And Councilmember Rigby.
I second that motion.
And actually, I think we all talked to our city manager about that. So I guess they have a motion and a second, and if no other, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, our next item, C10, is no-stopping and commercial loading zones on Olive Avenue. And maybe we could have -- how about a staff report on this one?
Good evening. My name is Sam Hassan and Traffic Engineering. We do have a PowerPoint, actually, if we could have that loaded.
It's on -- different bus stop.
It's in the same file, but it's trying to scroll down. Here we go. Okay, this is the one.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, so the request was initiated by traffic deputies from the Sheriff's Department who expressed concern with vehicles parking on Olive Avenue across the street from the Vista Transit Center. The parked vehicles cause buses to maneuver around them and cross the double-yellow center line. So we evaluated, we found that the existing street with -- on the west side where the vehicles are parking is just below what is normally, you know, we would like to have to accommodate parking in a travel lane. And especially in this case with the Vista Transit Center located across the street, there's a large volume of buses that use the street. We also looked at the street width across the street to see if we could re-strive. We found that the travel lane on the east side is 14 feet, but we wanted to keep that at the same width, also because of the buses. So the recommendation is to establish no parkings. And I apologize, there's -- I should go back, even though it's not in the PowerPoint. We did -- at the Traffic Commission meeting last month, we had the business owner, the tow-in business owner, attended the meeting and spoke and requested a commercial loading zone because he said a few times a month, he gets very large tow trucks that cannot access his business because of a power cable that goes across the driveway that's low in clearance. So he said the largest of the trucks have to pick up and drop off cars on the street. So we added to the recommendation, and the Traffic Commission recommended that we add 50-foot commercial loading zone in front of this business near the driveway. So -- and I apologize, that PowerPoint slide wasn't updated. And this is a picture, also does not show the commercial loading zone, but it shows Olive Avenue between Goering Way and Vista Village Drive. And the west side is where we're proposing the no-parking zone, as well as near the driveway of the tow-in business, a 50-foot commercial loading zone to accommodate their trucks. And there's some pictures. This is near the driveway of that tow-in business. And you'll see with even a small pickup truck parked, it's kind of tight for the buses. Sometimes there's -- the deputies stated that bigger vehicles, like bigger trucks and RVs, or not RVs, but vans, park kind of for extended periods and they cause the buses to cross the double-yellow center line. So the recommendation is to establish a no-parking zone on the west side of Olive Avenue between Goering and Vista Village Drive with a 50-foot commercial loading zone in front of the tow-in business.
Okay, I have -- I'm the speaker. Would you like to hear the speaker? He actually pulled it. Yuribe Lopez?
I'm on 229 Goering Way, and I'm here to say that I support the original recommendation to get rid of parking because it's becoming a real issue with buses. I oppose making it the commercial parking. The issue with that is that we saw with the small pickup truck, that even a small pickup truck blocks the buses and it creates a dangerous zone. So that was the original plan. And the exception was made to allow Adams Towing to sometimes park their large towing truck. So the point was just made that even a small pickup truck can block the way and make it dangerous. So what happens when Adams Towing parks their big towing trucks? That becomes a real issue. And it doesn't just happen once every week. It happens pretty much all the time. Adams Towing has pretty much decided that they're going to use that public area as personal parking. In fact, when people go in there and try to claim their cars, they're told park on the street because they decided to increase their business and they use their facility for -- as a mechanic shop, as a towing facility, and they're making their customers park on the street. And so that's one issue. And the other issue is that the staff pretty much said that even a small pickup truck creates a danger on that area. So having their large towing truck right there is definitely something dangerous. So I'm really happy that the council is taking the steps to fix that dangerous part, but we should do what we think, what we know is right, and get rid of all of it because making the exception for the large towing trucks makes no sense. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A question, could they -- could Adams unload their -- they have that lot next door, that vacant lot that's next door, could they unload their trucks, the cars in there? Would that be -- I'm just, the reason I'm thinking, if a small pickup truck, the buses have trouble getting by it, they surely have trouble getting by a big, a bigger truck that's unloading cars. Is that possible, that they can use that lot to do that, or no?
According to the business owner, that the big trucks could not get in because of this low-hanging power cable. I could not verify that. I didn't see the big trucks try to do it. And I'm not sure what the access is to the vacant lot, if there is access at all. But one thing about the commercial loading zone, it is limited to commercial loading, unloading, and for 20 minutes maximum, so it could be enforced if it is used for other purposes. But that was basically information provided by the business itself, as far as the big trucks.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Yeah, my concern was for the business. It sounds like it's been addressed. You're talking about twice a month or something like that?
He said several times a month.
Several times?
According to --
About a 20-minute increments, whatever. Dropping off vehicles is what they're doing, right?
Should be limited to that, and that could be enforced, yes.
And I think having a big truck going into that parking lot and then trying to get back out is going to cause major problems because that truck is going to have to back out of that parking lot, most likely. And now we're backing up traffic. I think it's just better to have the sheriffs. This is what the sheriffs requested. I support it. I think this is a good idea.
And if I could, Mayor, just page seven of seven in your agenda booklet shows the exact location of the proposed 50-foot temporary zone, so you have a better idea. It's just north of the O and Olive there on the depiction on the screen.
Yeah, it's not too large. Councilmember Rigby?
Yeah, I was going to say, sorry. The other issue that I know that they have there, too, is the business -- that business owner has complained to me personally that people park there, hang out, smoke cigarettes, and then they throw cigarettes into their property and trash and we have -- so I think the less people we have parking there, the better. In addition to that, I think there's a safety concern here because as people drop people off there, they cross the street, not crossing at the crosswalk. If we force them to park in the actual parking lot or drop off in a parking lot, it's much more likely that they're going to use the intersection there to cross. So I think this is a good idea. So I support it. I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you. I was just going to make the same comment about the timeframe. You said it was 20 minutes, and Mr. Lopez alluded to the fact that it's quite constant or a lot. So if there's 20 minutes, is there a minimum timeframe between their 20 minutes? Like, they can't just come and go all day long and unload one truck at 20 minutes at a time?
There is not really in the code that allows, you know, a gap between them, I guess, the different parking trips. But just from being in the area, you know, driving out there over time, I haven't seen that many trucks, really, that park in the street. I think mostly they do business inside. And it just seemed, just from my observations over the years, that their request or the information was legitimate, that they provided, that they just needed for, you know, certain types of trucks, that it's not constant type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Coles?
I think these are all really good comments, and I go that route often enough to know that it's tough for the buses with cars parked along there. So this is a great solution. And the issue of the 20-minute parking, in the event that that were abused, could we rescind that as a commercial zone down the road?
I was going to mention before that we can certainly keep an eye on the potential for this occurring, you know, for the blockage in large vehicles. And if it becomes a problem, or the business owner or the residents continue to have problems, we can certainly bring it back to the council.
Right. And because the big trucks are even more of a problem than the little trucks, if they spend any time there. And as far as customer parking, are there other locations where customers can park? Because they -- customers wouldn't be allowed to park in the commercial zone, is that right?
Correct. And they're not currently parking on the street. They're inside the parking lot, and the business did not express any concern with that. I don't think they have a big turnover of customers.
Well, I would support it as long as we monitor to make sure that there's not excessive over-parking there of the big trucks.
And I might add, the NCTD lot is rarely ever at capacity or near capacity, so there is plenty of parking in there.
I'll second the motion. I agree on the parking. I'm -- because I've been through there, and people tend to cross, they park there, and then people tend to cross the street to get into the cars that are parked over there. So I just was concerned about a big truck being there and the buses trying to get by a big truck, but I'll go with it. So please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Going back to the consent calendar, I did want to register my no vote on C12, please. Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda, hold on here, is our public hearing. There are no discussion items scheduled for tonight. So our public hearing, this is an appeal of a special use permit for 7-Eleven Appeal at 902 South Santa Fe Avenue. And first, we're going to hear the staff report. Then the applicant will present his case. And then the public will have an opportunity to comment. Those wishing to speak should present their speaker slips to the city clerk. And then please come to the podium and speak directly into the microphone for no longer than three minutes. The city council will then discuss the item, and once the public hearing is closed, there is no further opportunity for the public to address the council. So prior to opening the public hearing, I'd like to ask our council members if they have any disclosure statements. They should disclose any conflicts of interest that disqualify us from participation or any information regarding ex parte contact or site visits, including any resulting evidence you might consider making your decision, or any other disclosure that would defect your ability to render a fair and impartial decision. So any disclosures. So we'll start with -- how about we start with Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have not had any ex parte communication with the applicant. I did receive an email from a general member of the public, which was added to the agenda packets for the city council. So I have nothing -- I have nothing else.
Councilmember Coles?
I did stop by the store several weeks ago just to go in and look at the layout and the improvements that have been made around it.
Councilmember Campbell?
I did have a meeting with the applicant after the last council meeting in which the request for alcohol sales was denied. No further ex parte contacts were made.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Yes, I've had a couple of meetings with the applicant at his place of business.
Okay. And actually, I've had, I go in and buy Diet Coke there every now and then, so I've been in there, said hello. And then also, I got a check for my campaign, which I didn't know who it was from. And then when I called and found out that it was from someone with 7-Eleven, I gave the money back. I sent a check back to them, so -- but it won't affect my ability to make a fair or impartial decision. So, the public hearing is now open, and the Community Development Director, Conley, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a request for a special use permit for a Type 20 ABC license. That's an off-site sale of beer and wine at 902 South Santa Fe. This applicant first applied in late 2013 for the same use there, was denied by the Planning Commission and the city council earlier this year. Our development code allows reapplication for a use permit after three months has passed, and the application was resubmitted in July of this year. The Planning Commission reviewed their second request on August 26 and denied the application. And so we're before you this evening with an appeal of that decision. The subject location is the northeast corner of Civic Center Drive and South Santa Fe Avenue. It's a single property with a commercial building on it, two stories. The lower level is a 7-Eleven store. It's in the specific plan for downtown, Planning Area 4, which allows mixed-use commercial and residential. The convenience store is a permitted use. This is an aerial photo of the site showing the location of the store. It's surrounded by commercial uses on all sides, and nearest residential is about 400 feet northeast of the property. The proposal is to include beer and wine sales in some of the existing cooler areas on the floor. There's no other significant tenant improvements proposed on the site, so existing space, for the most part, would be used. Here are some photographs of the existing property. It was improved about a year and a half ago. It's been open for about a year as a 7-Eleven store. So at this point, staff is presenting either option to the council of approval or denial of this application. The site is located in Sheriff's Beat 307, which has a crime index of 115% of the citywide average. A high crime index is considered 120% or greater, so it's not considered high crime. The site is located in a census tract, which allows three off-sale licenses per current ABC standards, and there are three active licenses within this tract, so the additional license would create over-concentration. When the application came before the council in February of this year, there were a number of concerns expressed about security and safety of the property based on loitering and vagrancy in that area. And so the applicant has gone and done a number of improvements on the site to try to address those concerns, and they have a fairly detailed presentation, which they're going to provide, so I won't get into too much of that before they present. So that completes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Do any councilmembers have any questions for staff prior to the public testimony portion of the hearing? Okay, then that case, first, we're going to hear from the applicant for 7-Eleven. And so I have to have three, one, two, three, four, four people speaking for the applicant. The first is Robert Berry.
It's a pleasure to be here again. I want to thank you for your time and your previous input as well. I know you both, our parties and the city have spent quite a bit of time on what to consider be a small project for over a year and a half now, but we appreciate the time you've taken, the visits you've made to the store, and hopefully you can see the effort being made on our part, and that we did take your input seriously, as well as planning commission, and did execute as much as we felt we possibly could to meet those standards and requirements this past summer. As John noted, the store has been in operation about a year now. And with me tonight is the store operator and actually owner, Happy Singh, along with a few representatives of 7-Eleven, and be happy to answer any additional operational questions, security, beer and wine sales, things like that. I was involved mostly in the development and entitlement, and have been working with the team ever since. So I think, I'm gonna try not to be repetitive on a lot of things you probably already know or have seen before, and try to hit the highlights for you this evening. What we are really here tonight to do is, we're not here to increase the sales of alcohol in the city of Vista. We're here tonight to ask for a minor ABC license to sell a very small amount of alcohol to help a small business be successful. As John pointed out before, we purchased the building a little over a year and a half ago. We developed it with several improvements on the exterior and the interior, including the 7-Eleven interior improvements. This past summer, we made some significant upgrades, including, which mainly involve security and lighting with specific input from staff, Councilman Aguilera, and some other security advisors from 7-Eleven. We've seen some improvement in the loitering specifically around the area, which is now being more actively, say, proactively managed by the owner with the addition of some interior monitors with cameras all around the entire perimeter of the store. Again, I think we took your advice seriously and hope that you can recognize that fact. I'd like to address some of the main points in the staff report that John briefly reviewed. As noted, this project is not in a high-crime area. With an index of 115, it's below the threshold. There has been no criminal activity in this particular property since the store opened. I think it's important to point out that census tracts don't really overlap with the crime beats. And interestingly enough, the other two liquor stores in the area are in a crime beat, which is like 54%. So I think there's the studies and all that to show specific correlation between alcohol outlets and crime. You can look at studies a million different ways to support your cause, but that seems kind of unique, that those stores across the street would be in an area with a much, much less crime index. Again, I think it's important to note that we are asking for the minimum possible use of this particular license, and that includes what was really, as pointed out by, John here in a plan here, I'll try literally, is we're looking, if you looked at this room, and you went out how much beer and wine Happy is looking to sell, approximately these five first chairs compared this entire seating area in relationship to the amount of alcohol being sold at the other two liquor markets across the way, as well as Vons. So it's really not comparable. It's like comparing a dollar store to Walmart. If you don't like big boxes in discount stores, maybe you like a dollar store a little more than Walmart, I don't know. But it's really, we think you need to take a fair understanding that the studies, the crime beats, they do not differentiate between the size of the outlet or how much alcohol is sold, but you should please take that in consideration. Follow the other additional measures. I'll go to the photographs to point out the real differences that we have made, I think, in the last few months. I think, sounds like everybody is, if not all, most have visited the store. It's important to say that, again, this is not a bar, a restaurant, or a liquor store. It's a convenience store trying to sell a small amount of beer and wine for consumption. A lot of the DUIs, a lot of the alcohol abuse things do often come from large liquor stores, restaurants, the all-you-can-drink kind of things like that, the two-for-one happy hours. No pun intended, but that's not what's happening here at Happy's store. It's strictly a supplement to what he needs to do to be successful. The actual area isn't going to count for less than 10% of the total sales area, but it can directly increase his other sales by about 30 to 40%. I've been there a few times, and two out of three times, I saw someone come in and ask for beer, why didn't you have beer or wine? One person walked out, the other one did buy some snacks. But again, it's that transaction that makes a difference for success here. The other point I'd like to make, if they aren't going to buy it here, they're going to go to the big liquor store or the larger place down the street, which does sell hard liquor and cases of beer. We're selling six-packs and bottles of wine and no individual single beer or malt liquor. I think I'll let Happy speak to the economic viability of the store, which is still in jeopardy. He survived a year. He's worked really hard. He's invested his time and money from other operations he's had in the past. And I'd have to say, he's really the hardest-working tenant, owner, operator, he's not really a tenant, he's an owner. I've seen, I've been in shopping center business for 30 years. Love-hate relationship, you gotta love your tenants, right, as a landlord. But in this case, this gentleman is really unique. His family's involved, he's trustworthy, he's meticulous, he needs a chance to succeed, and we hope you can help him do that tonight. We really feel that one small establishment should not be punished or held responsible for issues that you might find elsewhere in this city. Please focus on what we are asking for tonight and not a broader issue of society. 7-Eleven is very selective in who they choose for their operations and franchisees. You've met Happy, you know how he works. 7-Eleven can speak to how they go through that process if you would like. And if you want more history, we can go back through that. The conditions of the SUP approval, which are different from what I would assume would be the other license that were issued in the city, as far as my personal observation, none of the, a lot of these specific items are not enforced or were ever required at the other outlets. That would include no wine sold with content greater than 15%, no exterior advertising. There'll be no beer signs, no neon signs, no discount alcohol sales on the windows. Obviously, no open containers allowed in the store. And beverages will only be sold in manufacturer prepackaging units, so you can't go in and buy a single tall one, small one, whatever, that is often a problem with loitering or people who may be lesser income, who maybe want to hang out at the store. That's going to be unnegated. We do, are going to install electronic locks on the coolers, which can be done electronically so that between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and midnight, they will be open, and all others, they will be locked. I made a mistake, did someone correct at the bottom of this? It should be 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., not 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. as far as hours of operation. Not the best PowerPoint punchless person. Also, we'd like, the security monitoring that was installed this past summer now does have a monitor at the station, at the sales counter. It's on all corners of the building and has greatly increased Happy's ability to monitor who and what happens around his property. Again, that was done with the city input. The conditions of timing, that's pretty much a city standard, as I understand, at 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And I would like to make the point that the census tract, in this case, there are three licenses. This is a commercial corridor. Our experience throughout California, Colorado, Utah, to lesser extent, for obvious reasons, commercial corridors obviously oftentimes have over-concentration. That's the nature of a commercial corridor. This is not next to a residential area. It's next to a shopping center and a lot of other strip centers. We're happy to accept the conditions of approval written up for the off-premises beer and wine sales with your specific restrictions. Happy is also enthusiastic, supports the responsible beverage sales ordinance of 2009, and would be completing the official state-required course should he be, receive his approval tonight. 7-Eleven has a specific coming-of-age program for underage, to monitor underage drinking, to make sure that people are being responsible and checking IDs and such. They'd be happy to speak to that if needed. We're also open to discussing alternate conditions should you feel necessity. The floor plan, I think you've seen and heard the minimal amount that we are asking for tonight, really less than 10%. And I'd like to kind of jump on to the improvements that we made with the input of staff and the council. These are the new security cameras put on the outside of the building. You can see the monitor in the lower right-hand corner, which is right next to the cashier We've added floodlights to the back and the sides of the building, which were rather dark when they're being approached by the parking lot in the rear. A lot of customers do park up in the shopping center, come around to utilize, get access to the store. We've also kind of cleaned up the back of the area, the windows and storefronts. You can't exit through the rear door rather than having to go around to the front. Some more pictures of the floodlights. Before picture of the right-hand side, looking to the rear, this was after we redeveloped and cleaned it up. You can see that we've, the picture in the lower right really shows the difference. We cut back the shrubs, we've put up a gate to keep people from cutting around through the back. There's only one way to access the store, and that's from the parking lot. Here's a gate we installed on the stairway on the right-hand side of the building to avoid people from hanging out on the steps. Before on the left, after on the right. There was a little handy footpath along the back of the building in the past, kind of creepy at night when it was, before it was there. We've now cut back the bushes, we've installed floodlights, we've replanted it, so that's not encouraging anybody to walk around the back of the store where they really should not be inhabiting permanently or temporarily. We've installed noy loitering signs on the different corners of the buildings. We've installed some trash cans and ashtrays as well for legitimate customers' use. This was a site plan where we identified the strategic placement of lighting, cameras, et cetera, to be reviewed by staff. And our security team that came, reviewed this and put all this work in, which include locks, the gates you see in orange, the cameras you see in blue, and then the floodlights I believe you see in green. You visited the store, you know it's a nice, clean, greatly maintained 7-Eleven, not your old 7-Eleven. Focus being for some fresh selections, coffee, of course, Slurpee is the usual, but it's not your old 7-Eleven store, and I hope you've enjoyed visiting it and enjoyed speaking with Happy if you did get a chance to speak with him. Community outreach, we've told you earlier, we did reach out to staff, council for your input. We do appreciate that and appreciate your time with having the input. We've met numerous times, the chamber, the council, the mayor, to address your concerns, and hope that you can see that we've made an effort to react to all that information. We've also reached out to more recent group of customers. We have 200 signatures submitted tonight, just, that were given just within the last couple of weeks, along with some local business owners. That was turned into Amanda earlier tonight. In the end, I'd just like to summarize the benefits. Bottom line, really going to allow the responsible franchisee to remain in business. He's made it through a year, he's struggled, he's put all his money in it to keep this thing alive. If he eventually can get some more sales, he will be hiring new people. He'll also generate more tax revenue for the city. He's obviously providing a convenient, one-stop neighborhood market, and would like to consider just to be able to do so with the request for this SUP. As you know, this ABC license can be reevaluated at any time in the future by the request of the public or the city, so it's not like they're signing up for something for 10 years. We want to, we want, Happy to have the chance to succeed. We'd hope he'd be, continue to be the model of the pride of ownership and set a precedent for improving this area. It's a slow go. I know the shopping center's had some tenants come and go, but you have to start somewhere. And we think this has been a great corner. We would hope we can maintain it. In closing, I think following our speech, I'll let Happy give you some words as to how his business is going, but I think everybody here and in the crowd tonight really understand that the road to reducing alcohol or drug issues in a community is education. It's not prohibition of a specific store, a specific product, or signage. We're happy to hear about that. No one likes to promote alcohol and drug abuse. That's not our goal. Mr. Singh should not be a poster child for alcohol abuse, and I kind of feel like that's what we saw at one of the more recent hearings. I think that's very unfair, given what we're asking for in this SUP. What it should be, show how, a model of how a man can work hard in America and be rewarded when he can manage a small store successfully and have a responsible business with support from the public, officials with mutual respect and understanding. If you really just don't feel this store should be responsible for all issues of community, if anything, Happy in his store will be a model of what a small business should do to help situations in the community and improve the environment for students, families, and customers. With that said, I thank you. Happy, I can answer any questions right now, or Happy would be here to speak regarding the store operations. I would like to reserve the opportunity to rebut any of the public speakers. Thank you.
Do you have any questions of him right now, or do you want to hear the rest of the speakers? I have, okay. Happy Singh is next, our next speaker.
Good evening, councilmembers and respected public also. Good evening to everybody. Here I go, here I go again, a little nervous, but actually, you all heard about, you know, what I'm asking for here. But today, actually, I would like to speak about myself more. I came to this country about 18 years ago, and I was only about 20 years, you know, 20 years of age at that time. And I had a dream, I mean, everybody say that, you know, I'm in American dream, and my parents were here, I mean, they also came with me, and we all worked hard, you know, literally worked hard. And I stayed away from everything. I got my education here, my brother got his education here. My dad, till date, he's working, you know, I mean, for others today, he's working for me also at my store. You can check that, he is working there right now, you know. And I did everything, everything possible within the law to make myself successful, staying away from the bad habits, you know, of the society, you know. If I had got involved in that, maybe I was not standing here today asking for, you know, anything like this, you know. I mean, I mean, I was a, we were a minority in our country, too. I belong to India. You know, I know it's relevant, but I think it's important for the public because sometimes they make their decisions or they have some assumption based on how we look or what the things, you know. And we were minority there, and we are minority here, and we always struggled, you know, and, but we struggle by working hard, you know. That's how we, you know, struggle, you know. And I'm doing whatever, you know, I can to run a successful business, you know, I'm trying to make it successful. And somebody said in the last meeting, you know, in the planning commission meeting, that we shouldn't think about one business, you know. I mean, how does that work, you know? I mean, businesses are the backbone, you know, the small businesses are the backbone of America, you know. How can you say that you shouldn't care about one small business, you know? If they can, if the big businesses can get away with everything, I mean, we're just asking for not any favor, just something that we can sell to the public, to the, you know, to the customers, you know, within the limits of the law, you know. And to me, all this alcohol abuse and everything that we talk about, I am also in favor, you know, of saying, okay, let's get rid of it, you know, let's get rid of it everywhere, you know. I mean, shouldn't be any problem. But I think it's mostly education that we need to educate our kids from the home, starting from the home. We should keep like alcohol or, you know, cigarettes in our reach, you know, that so that they don't get, you know, in their hand. I think it all starts from there. So I think education is the problem here. We need to educate our younger generations and kids about how to deal with, you know, anything, you know, like alcohol or cigarettes and all that. But I'm not promoting here anything alcohol- and all that, but I'm not promoting here anything alcohol or anything like that, I'm just trying to make a living by working in my store, I'm trying to create more jobs if possible, you know, if I get higher sales, and I'm just trying to live a, you know, American dream kind of life, you know, I mean, just running my own business, you know. And I think that's all I have to say, I will, I will just do whatever is within the law, you know, to, you know, to help sell the alcohol and nothing to promote it. I don't want to, I don't have to promote, I want to promote food or other non-alcoholic beverages, but not alcohol, you know. So, I don't know, that's all I have to say today, and I really appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you. Thanks, Happy. Amelia Ruby, Amelia Ruby?
Good evening, council members, and good evening Vista neighbors. My name is Amelia Ruby, and I work hand-in-hand with Happy at the store. I do work for Seven-Eleven Corporate. I just want to kind of go over the training that we have for alcohol sales in our stores. Overall, I think we have a very elite kind of training program that's very exclusive to a lot of stores. It is very in-depth training course for all age-restricted sales items, so cigarettes and alcohol sales. Basically what it is, is this, this class is available to be taken 24/7 on our computers. So every single shift, graveyard shift, first shift, second shift, they're all have access to it any time of the day to do it. We require this training to be done, and it has to be renewed annually with us. So with the classes that they take, they also have to take a quiz at the end, and they have to pass in order to get certified. So that is done on an annual basis. In addition to that class, we, actually the City of Vista requires another mandatory training classes. So our sales associates actually get trained twice, you know, through the City of Vista, which is led through the ABC class, you guys have the lead class, and it's just reinforcement. So these classes basically teach our sales associates how to properly spot IDs, how to spot out fake IDs, how to recognize any underage drivers, how to refuse service to any people that we think might be intoxicated, how to spot third-party sales, and we actually ask all our staff to ID anyone that looks 30 years old or younger. And in addition to all that, we also have, we hire a third party that, that goes around our stores and they do mystery shops. So we actually have people that go around as decoys and try to buy alcohol or try to buy cigarettes, and we have to verify that the sales associate actually asks for ID before they give, make the sale. If they pass, they get a green card, and they don't pass, they get a red card, and we are notified at corporate when things don't go well. And we, my job is to go one-on-one and make sure that the, speak with the sales associate and see what happened. A lot of times, red cards may happen, like the decoy might look a lot older than 30, there have been times when that has happened, but there's a lot of reinforcement on training and making sure that our community is safe, because Seven-Eleven is a community store, and we want it to stay that way. We want to be welcomed in our communities, we want to feel a part of the community that we care. We're not a liquor store, we're, we're not in it just to make money, and we really do see it as a, an investment into the areas that we, that we open up in. I think they talked about other things as well, but, you know, we have the ongoing, if we do get the alcohol, the doors will have the automatic locks, and they are remotely open, so they actually can stay closed the whole time until someone wants to open it, you know, we can remotely open it from the cash register. And our POS systems or registers are very high-tech, so with any sale, whenever the item is scanned, any age-restricted item that is scanned, it has pops-up that you have to put in the birth date. You have to manually look at it, enter a date, or swipe the card, or scan the card to see that the ID is actually legit, and that the age is appropriate for the sale. So if you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to come back and answer them a little bit later, but I just wanted to reassure you that our training is very, very detailed, and Happy is a wonderful, very compliant man, and definitely cares about the neighborhood and would not, do nothing to do anything, to do any harm. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wendy Thielman? Is Wendy here? Oh, she's stuck in traffic, okay, so we'll, so with that, now we're here from the public, and so we'll start with the public, and you're allowed three minutes, so we have quite a few speakers. So first speaker is Renee Glatschba. She'll be followed by Ann Stram.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff. Every life matters. The father of baby Isaiah can tell you, every life matters, and he is so grateful that his little baby Isaiah is living, and he's telling people, do not drink, do not drink and drive, do not drink and drive. Every man, woman, and child has the constitutional right to be safe. Honest taxpayers who signed the petition need your vote, no vote on PC-8267 off-sales number 20 and 21 to make this happen for safe Vista Unified School Districts, students, safe families, safe homes, motor, safe motorists, safe pedestrians, safe bicyclists, safe shoppers, there are the required three ABC off-sale license number 20 and 21 already on track 198.02, and for others near, which make it seven. Now, if numbered PC-8267 would be eight, too many. Maestro Dale DuWart and music, of Music Exchange and cyclist Chris Muse, storekeeper of Alpha Bicycles of Vista in Yardage Town, and Vons agree, and many other shopkeepers, that everyone needs to be safe. There's Vons, La Vista Liquor and Deli, Brantow Vista Market, AMPM gas station, CVS, Walgreens, Slick Liquor. Honor Vista's devoted mayor Gloria McGludon's quest for Vista's Vision 2000 to provide supervisor Dave Roberts' quest to pursue for much-needed trustworthy foster parents for voices for children to live in safe homes and to stop PC-8267 Seven-Eleven on parcel 902 South Santa Fe Vista now and into the future. Hundreds of years, never, ever, ever on this parcel, safety comes first. Thank you.
Ann, I think it's called Stran, followed by Brett Schautzenbach.
Good evening. I'm here to testify against PC-8267. I think 115% crime index for this area is abominable. I think that a lot of crime in this area goes unreported, and we all know that there's been problems in South Santa Fe. Every night there's sirens, every night there are helicopters, every day there are police chases, as occurred on Sunday when a stolen van was sighted there, and then it went off to Val Terrace and hit three cars. This area doesn't really need any more alcohol, what it needs is a substation for police, and perhaps a vacant building next to the Seven-Eleven would be a good site for that. Behind the Seven-Eleven is the Wells Fargo Bank, if you've ever driven through that, you've probably noticed the transients that are hanging behind the vacant building there and the Seven-Eleven. You've probably also seen the transients that have actually laid in the parking spaces of Vons. My sister recently was accosted by a panhandler at CVS, and after she refused to give him money, he exposed himself. That went unreported, she just rushed to her car and went home. Much of the crime that occurs in this area is not being reported, and I think the 115% index is a real indicator that we have a problem in this area, we have a problem with crime, we have a problem with transients, we have a problem with loitering, and I think we have a problem with alcohol. Okay? So that's my feeling on this issue, and I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Schautzenbach, followed by Ray Pearson.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. My name is Brett Schautzenbach, I'm the CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We wanted to come and encourage you to approve the request made by a Seven-Eleven here tonight to have the ability to sell beer and wine in his store. A couple of points I want to make. One, as a citizen of the community, I, like a couple of you, have been here a long, very long time, and have seen that particular corner be very dilapidated, very rundown, and now have seen the transformation that Seven-Eleven has made in that corner, and it's great to see, especially as we are finally redoing the Paseo Santa Fe corridor on South Santa Fe there and seeing some new activities and developments. It'd be great to keep that end of it down there in the condition it is now and see it thrive instead of go back to a very poor condition that it has been in the past. Another point, I had the great opportunity last winter to participate in the Vista Leadership Academy, and one of the highlights of participating in that academy is getting to go on the bus tour that goes around the city and talk about different developments. And while we're going around, because I'm involved in the chamber, some of the other classmates of mine started asking me, hey, why can't I buy beer and wine at the Seven-Eleven there? So of course I raised my hand and asked Mr. Conley, excuse me, Mr. Conley, why can't these poor people buy beer and wine there? And he of course blamed all of you, but the point is that the public doesn't get it, you know, they think, they see a Seven-Eleven, they feel like that's a convenience store where they should be able to go in and buy some beer and wine with other snacks, so they don't get it. And I have heard the criticism, which is somewhat valid, that, you know, this franchise owner knew what he was getting into when he went in there. There's some validity to that, and he's tried to make a go of it, as is, without alcohol. However, it's, as you've heard, it's been a big challenge for him, but I would say in counter to that, that the city also knew what they were getting into in approving a Seven-Eleven there. It's the ninth Seven-Eleven in our community, and all the other eight do have the ability to sell beer and wine. Five of the other eight have the ability to sell gas, they have gas stations there, and both of those allow them to help raise incidentals, sales through their store. So we would request that you would grant him this opportunity, give him a fighting chance to keep his business going. We have seen through the chamber him, you know, support the community in different ways, and he wants to be a, you know, an active participant in this community. So we encourage you to approve his request and allow him this chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Pearson, followed by John Byram.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ray Pearson, and I'm the president of North Coastal Prevention Coalition, a 21-year-old organization whose mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Vista, Carlsbad, and Oceanside through community action, education, support, and collaboration. As our name implies, we are committed to working with all sectors of the community to prevent problems before they start. We congratulate the City of Vista, receiving a $7,500 grant from the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control to be used by deputies, sheriff deputies, to prevent underage drinking. Based on a thorough analysis of multiple research studies, the U.S. Task Force on Community Prevention Services concludes that limiting on and off premises alcohol beverage outlet density, either by reducing current density levels or limiting density growth, can be an effective means of reducing the harms associated with excessive alcohol consumption. It may also provide additional benefits for quality of life by reducing community problems such as loitering, public disturbances, and vandalism. It's for these reasons that we recommend and commend the initial staff report recommending the denial of the special use permit for beer and wine sales at the newly opened Seven-Eleven. While the current crime index of 115% is not defined as high crime, it has nevertheless increased from 98.6% in 2012. In addition, the area is at the maximum number of off-sale licenses recommended by ABC Calculations, which is three, and there are an additional two licenses across the street, Walgreens and CVS. Alcohol remains the most abused drug by young people in our communities, and it is associated with the leading causes of death for teens and young adults, motor vehicle crashes, homicides, and suicides. Thank you for your consideration in this important matter.
Thank you. John Byram, followed by Nanette Stam.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Byram, and I am a prevention specialist with the North Coastal Prevention Coalition and Vista Community Clinic. I attended the council meeting in February where, when the request for the special use permit for beer and wine sales at this location was denied. The initial staff recommendation to deny the special use permit was not a criticism of the particular business operation, but an acknowledgement that increasing alcohol availability impacts our entire community. While the applicant can be commended for his efforts to improve this property and increase security measures, that cannot negate the findings of growing bodies of research that cite, that were cited in the staff report stating that statistical data from the U.S. Department of Justice shows direct correlation between facilities that have alcohol sales and an increase in crime. NCPC recognizes that all sectors of the community play an important role in preventing underage drinking by using local land use authority, zoning regulations, local officials can take action to prevent underage drinking. It's my understanding that this applicant was informed long before the business was open that the city may not approve an alcohol sales at this location. Based on previous actions of the Planning Commission in January, and again last month, the City Council in February denying the special use permit, that appears to be true. Staff reached a logical conclusion based on the potential to increase crime in the vicinity of the project site. Proposed alcohol sales would not be compatible and would not be in harmony with residential uses located in the surrounding areas. And I just wanted to add, the applicant said 10% of the store would be for alcohol sales. There's an AMPM over on North Santa Fe, and I'm sure they said the same thing, and there's so many stacks of beer, 12-packs in that store, they could keep everybody in this place drunk for a month. It's not about the cooler size, it's about the whole and how much is going to be in that. There's a lot of businesses with a lot of stacks of alcohol that are not in that 10%. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Nanette Stam, followed by Erica Leary.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Nanette Stam, and I'm the director of the Health Promotion Center at Vista Community Clinic, as well as a board member of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, and I also live in Vista, and my children attend Vista schools. And as a public health professional, I believe it's important to understand the role that public policies play in shaping our environment and impacting community health. I was pleased when I attended the council meeting on March 25th, where the council approved an amendment to the Development Code regarding minor use permits for alcohol sales and standardized the conditions for various types of businesses. However, in addition to standard conditions that aim to mitigate problems, the overall number of businesses licensed to sell alcohol has an impact on community health. It has nothing to do with operations of each individual businesses who may be very responsible in refusing sales to minors and keeping their store clean and secure, but the density of outlets per population has an effect. Numerous studies conclude that increased alcohol outlet density contributes to negative community impacts, including excessive alcohol consumption, crime, and violence. In addition, a recent study in California concluded that having a greater number of alcohol outlets increases youth access to alcohol. With nearly 70 businesses licensed for off-sale alcohol sales, Vista already has the highest ratio of off-sale alcohol retailers per population compared with other neighboring North County cities, with one license for every 1,300 residents. San Marcos and Oceanside average approximately one license for every 1,500 residents, and Carlsbad one per 1,700. As noted in the staff report, this census tract is already at the maximum number of licensed establishments per ABC recommendations, and there are two additional licenses, licenses across the street. The Planning Commission and the council's initial decision to deny a special use permit at this location considered the current research, the ABC recommendation, potential impacts on the entire community, and the vision and goals of Vista's general plan, and I hope you continue to consider those important points tonight as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Erica Leary, followed by Christina Mullis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. You know, my name is Erica Leary, and I'm the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, which is fiscally managed by Vista Community Clinic. And I was here before you not too long ago when you considered a similar request from the proposed Dollar General on North Santa Fe. And I was very impressed with the thorough analysis contained in the city's staff report, as well as the discussion, that included the prevailing national research findings that increased alcohol outlet density contributes to negative community impacts, including excessive alcohol consumption, crime, and violence. As a public health professional, I'm also very pleased to know that Vista has included a Healthy Vista element in its most recent general plan adopted in February 2012. And part of the reason behind this was because there is an alarming increase in certain health risk factors over the past several decades that indicates there's a new urgency to involve all levels of government in promoting improved public health. The Healthy Vista element demonstrates the city's awareness of the role local governments can have in improving public health and promoting healthier residents by taking a leadership role in making community health and wellness priorities. You know, to be honest, if education was sufficient, my job would be very easy and much more enjoyable. I don't like getting into debates and opposition with business interests. I understand the different points of view. But on any public health issue, I was just at a seminar last week with Mark Fenton on healthy walkable communities, how we need to walk and bike more and eat better foods. And we all know that, but we don't all do it. And that is in large part because of the way our communities are structured. And the research around alcohol availability demonstrates that the overall density and increased access and availability contributes to those alcohol problems. The Planning Commission and City Council have already voted to deny a special use permit for sales at this location, which is in direct support of the Healthy Vista element, and to reverse course now may undermine future efforts to follow the goals stated in Vista's general plan. I don't have any doubts that the applicant is a hard-working man who wants the best for his family, for his customers, and has no intention to cause problems in the city of Vista selling alcohol. Unfortunately, his desires don't match with the research findings. It's not that we're going to be able to prove that a six-pack bought at his store resulted in a fight two blocks away, or domestic violence incidents, or underage drinking party. It's just that overall access and availability. Approving another alcohol license in an area already at the maximum per ABC guidelines, with two more across the street, would not follow Vista's general plan, commitment to improve public health and promote healthier residents by taking a leadership role in making community health and wellness a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Mullis, followed by Kaylee Halsey.
Good evening. My name is Christina Mullis, and I'm a prevention specialist for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition. Recently, NCPC created a survey to gauge the opinion of community members about alcohol sales in Vista. NCPC, the Resident Leadership Academy, students, and the Rancho Buena Vista High School Public Policy Club, and others worked to collect nearly 400 surveys. Almost three-quarters of the responses were Vista residents, and 43% were people 17 years old or younger. Some of the findings from this survey include alcohol or other drug use was cited most often as the issue that impacts feelings of safety, selected by nearly 60% of respondents. This was followed closely by impaired driving, gangs, and crime at about 54% each. 72% of respondents think youth have more access to alcohol if there are a lot of stores in their neighborhood that sell alcohol. Almost 60% think neighborhoods with more stores that sell alcohol have more crime. 70% think cities should limit the number of places where alcohol can be sold. And 50% think the city of Vista should not approve a permit for the sale of beer and wine at this 7-Eleven, with an additional 20% undecided. Respondents were also given the opportunity to add any additional comments, and I would just like to read a few of those comments that we received from three different Vista residents. The first comment says, "My children attend school in Vista, and we do most of our shopping and spend a lot of time in Vista. The last thing Vista needs is more alcohol-selling establishments." A second comment said, "I live within a mile of the 7-Eleven, and there are plenty of other places to buy alcohol, including a liquor store just down the street." And finally, "Thank you for your calling out this problem in Vista. I live in the 1,600 block of East Vista Way, and there are two liquor stores and two chain stores selling liquor in a three-to-four-block area, as well as $3 stores within a mile to a mile and a half of each other. I have been told that the city of Vista contacted Trader Joe's during development, and Trader Joe's declined to participate. We need to create an atmosphere that will draw higher-end stores to our area. It's clear that alcohol and drug issues are a top concern among Vista residents. With nearly 70 stores already licensed to sell alcohol in Vista, granting another license may contribute to additional problems rather than preventing problems from getting worse." Thank you.
Thank you. Kaylee Halsey, followed by Carla Ruiz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Kaylee Halsey, and I'm a student at Rancho Buena Vista High School, and I'm a part of Natural High. As a part of the Natural High Club, we work to reduce the amount of drug and alcohol abuse by teens, so adding another source of alcohol is only going to negatively affect our efforts. It has been said the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption will be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of persons residing in the vicinity of the site. Statistics have shown that with more facilities selling alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption, there's an increase in crime. With this knowledge, citizens should be more concerned for the welfare of our community and not that of individual businesses. Alcohol has been associated with the leading causes of death for teens and young adults. Vista has almost 70 stores licensed to sell alcohol, and alcohol is the most abused drug by teens. Therefore, we don't, we definitely don't need another business selling alcohol. I know of several instances where students have easily obtained alcohol because of how accessible it is from so many stores. There are at least four businesses that sell alcohol for off-site consumption in the proximity of my school. If less businesses sold alcohol, then it would be harder for students to obtain the alcohol. Then the likelihood of underage drinking would decrease, and there would be less lives in danger from the consequences of alcohol consumption. I'm here tonight because I care about the community and am concerned about the impact that another business with a permit to sell beer and wine will have on future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Ruiz, followed by Arubie Lopez.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Carla Ruiz, and I'm with the North Coastal Provincial Youth Coalition. And we're here tonight to process against the license, because there is already nearly 70 licensed stores in Vista that already sell alcohol. And alcohol is the most abused drug by teens, which was already mentioned earlier. It affects the health and safety of the persons that reside nearby the store, and it also increases the public disturbance, and it increases motor vehicle crashes, and it increases the crime. They did mention that they're only trying to sell a small amount of alcohol, but that small amount only adds to what already is being sold and increases the chances of teenagers accessing the alcohol. Thank you.
I have a comment to add. They say the success for the 7-Eleven store, but we ask for the success of students more because it'll be more open for students to just ask adults for alcohol if, and there's a possibility that adults will be willing to do that for students.
I also kind of have a comment on how they train their employees, because even though that they are trained, teenagers do have the capability to ask other adults over the age of 21 to buy their own alcohol. And increasing the sale of alcohol can increase crime rate, even though it's already a low crime rate, but increasing the sale of alcohol could increase that crime rate. Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Arubie Lopez, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Hello again, Council. My name is Arubie Lopez, and I'm a resident of Vista. I'm here to speak against granting the 7-Eleven a liquor license. The Planning Commission and the staff both recommended that you deny the license. The community does not need another liquor store. In the initial comments, the 7-Eleven said that they are not here to increase the sale of alcohol in the city. That is the only reason they are here. If that was not the reason, they wouldn't have spent so much money in this review process that takes a lot of time and a lot of money, and they keep coming back because that is their main objective. It's not minor, and I'm pretty sure they'll be coming back because that is the only way they can be sustainable, by selling alcohol. They've also said that they're not here to promote alcohol, but if you drive by their store, you'll see that in the front, they're promoting cigarettes. It's the same, it's the same deal. They're going to have signs saying that people should buy alcohol because that's what they're here for, and that's the reason they are spending so much money and effort in trying to get this license. My other question is, I've missed a bit, the part of the standard of review for granting the license. Can you grant the license just because you want to? Or do you have to meet a certain standard that says that there is a necessity and convenience of the community for that license to be granted? If that's the standard, then if you grant the license, you have to explain why you believe it is a necessity for the community. Again, I haven't heard the staff make that point clear, that what is the standard for you granting the license? It's not just whether you are pro and you think it should be there, but if there is a specific standard that says that you can only grant it if it's a necessity for the community, then you have to be held to that standard. Thank you very much.
Cliff Kaiser, followed by Ashley Bernard.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. A couple of points I'd like to make, a couple of them other than what has been the theme here. I appreciate what Mr. Singh did with improving the appearance of that building there on that corner, but I would offer that that is still pretty weak in terms of facade, design, and architecture for what Vista is going after. If you look just down in that same community, in that same shopping center, you have the AutoZone, which looks like a box. It's just a really ugly shopping center, and I don't think the design standards of Vista are high enough to allow us to put something together or to enforce some architecture and design standards to make that community or that corner, which is a gateway into Vista. It leads right to the Civic Center and leads right to downtown Vista, what we really should offer to our community. The other item is, Mr. Singh had mentioned about adding security measures, cameras and gates, and removing a path and stuff like that. And that's unfortunate that we, as a business person, or he as a business person, has to go through these efforts. How about we strive to build a community where we don't have to have these draconian security measures to keep the business safe? I understand that's the nature of what it is, but I encourage you to find the solution to make Vista a community where we don't have to go to those measures. The other thing is that Mr. Singh is offering convenience. He's offering a free market. There's been plenty of comments here about there's plenty of alcohol sales here, but he's not going to sell any more alcohol here in Vista than the next guy, or he's not going to increase the volume of alcohol. He's going to steal those alcohol sales from Vons and CVS and Walgreens because he's offering convenience. He went through and put his risk up there and said, "I'm going to offer this convenience. I'm going to invest in this corner real estate, and I'm going to offer this to the people that want that convenience." If people don't like that convenience, or they don't want that convenience, or they want to buy it a little bit cheaper, they'll go over to the Vons, or maybe over to the CVS or the Walgreens. Alcohol sales in the area, I believe, will not increase. They'll just be directed, some of it, to Mr. Singh's place at the 7-Eleven, and less to the Vons and the other. If underage sales is an issue, that's not Mr. Singh's problem. That's the sheriff's problem. That's your problem. You need to solve that problem of allowing sales to underage teens. And my last point is that the North Coastal Prevention Coalition offered several comments, and I believe that they're fiscally managed by the, as somebody said, the Vista Community Clinic, which is primarily funded by the government. Here we have the government here trying to dictate or encourage what kind of sales are happening here in Vista. Pretty soon, they're going to be selling, no, you can't sell potato chips because they're fattening. You can't sell pop because it's fattening and has too much sugar in it. You're going to get diabetes. We don't need government going this far into our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Bernard.
This is actually our last speaker. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Ashley Bernard, Chairwoman of the Vista Chamber of Commerce. You guys have heard me speak previously in regards to this issue, and there's been a lot of opposition here for this. The community has some seriously valid points that they're making, but at the end of the day, we can jumble this up, and I can call it crime. Right? So, we are looking at crime, and that has been the major concern overall, is selling alcohol to minors, the crime in the area, and the high crime statistics for the area. I personally manage 707 Civic Center Drive, which is right across the street from Happy 7-Eleven. And I don't know if you're familiar with this building. It's the big brown building with the very East Coast kind of charm look to the outside of it. This particular building I took over in March of this year, I had a problem with transits and had approximately 15 transits at any given time in the evening that were on this building. Since I've taken over, I've implemented lighting into the parking lots. We've implemented lighting on the building, and we have also increased our tenants and put in decent tenants within that building. As a result, I can tell you right now, at any given time, I have no more than two transits on the property. We still have a few more things that we're working on. That property is directly across from Happy 7-Eleven. Happy's viability being in the 7-Eleven is huge. We are in the city of Vista, and we are looking to improve our city. By doing so, we need business owners that are reputable, that are complying with regulations and the rules of the city. Happy has gone through extensive amounts of research, as well as altering the building itself and the security measures, to increase the security within this building. If we look at this map here, John's pulled up, thank you, John. Towards the right far back is where we've got the alcohol sales. Is that correct? So, our front door is right there in the middle. Happy is not presenting the alcohol at the front of the store. He's presenting the alcohol in the farthest portion of the building from the front door. He is not promoting alcohol from the second you walk in. He's making it a viable way to run his business and to also keep up with the demand from the other business places that sell alcohol. There was a variance granted previously by City Council that allowed some adjustments on that corner to allow another facility to have alcohol sales when we were not supposed to because of the tracks. Happy has a very small percentage of his store that's going to be using alcohol sales. He's gone through all the security measures as a result, and he is a business that is there 24 hours with lighting outside. We no longer have steps behind the building. What is our alternative? If Happy closes his doors, we now have a vacant building sitting on that corner. In my opinion, based on what I've seen from 707 Civic Center right across the street and from other vacant properties within the city, that is where the real crime begins, when we have dark vacant buildings with nobody there to manage them, to keep the crime off of the property, or to regulate the alcohol sales that are occurring. If an individual is looking to purchase alcohol, there are many other places within the city that they can go to. They will go across the street. They will still get their alcohol, and they will still cause the same amount of crime that they could have caused at 7-Eleven. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Okay, so, now, we're all through the speakers, now I have to offer the applicant to see if he has any further comments. I don't know if...
Yes, please. Mayor would like to make a few comments in response.
We're all very aware of issues within Vista and society at large, and again, we are trying to be sensitive to those concerns. And number one, I think it starts with education, we think is important, but responsibility is number one from everybody when it comes to any kind of alcohol abuse or sales in any given area. The other thing that's important is to understand competition. One of the speakers noted that the studies say one thing, and I'll talk about that, but clearly, we're not, again, we're not trying to add to the alcohol sales in Vista. What we expect to happen is that someone would have went to a liquor, had made two trips to Happy Store, would have went and had to go to the liquor store, or CVS, or Walgreens. Instead, they're buying their six-pack or their bottle of wine at our store. We're not drawing people from out of town like Trader Joe's or some other large liquor store. Again, this is not a liquor store. The studies, I've read them, a lot of it goes over my head, honestly. It's statistics. They don't differentiate between the income of the area, the type of alcohol being sold, the type of store, or a lot of things. Studies can say a lot of things and come to conclusions, but what I really did notice is they don't do any studies on convenience stores compared with a small amount of sales compared to a liquor store, a restaurant that sells drinks for dinner, or just simply taverns. It's all in one lump study. Of course, you're going to come to some conclusion that the amount of outlets increase the amount of abuse in the area. I think that's really, they're really honestly really not conclusive. One thing that would be conclusive, if this store goes dark and the building is vacant, there will be increased crime and homelessness on this particular parcel. Again, I would like to make note that the license can be revoked should there be any problems in the future. That is part of the conditions as written. Again, 7-Eleven, reputable corporation, you'll find a lot of private orders, may or may not adhere to the conditions. 7-Eleven will strictly enforce the area of sales being approved today for sales if possible. The 10% would be monitored. You're not going to see a proliferation of the coffee bar stacked with six-packs or cases of Coors Light, or whatever you prefer. Again, I don't believe we're really adding to the sales. Again, it comes back to responsibility and competition, fair competition. That's all we're asking for tonight. We'd hope you take that in consideration in your making your decision. We're happy to answer any other specific questions.
Okay, council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Rigby, are you on from this time or from previously? Previously? Okay. Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions of staff or appellants or... Oh, I have to leave the public hearing open so that there's any questions of staff. Okay. So then, does anybody want to speak? Nobody? Okay, Deputy Maria Aguilera.
Well, I might as well speak first, since I voted against this last time. I did feel bad about voting no from a business standpoint, because I think every business owner should have the opportunity to thrive. And I know that that business coming into our city in that particular location, although I agree with what was said earlier, probably not perfect as far as what we want in our city, not a lot we can do. Buildings is in there forever. Half the time, it's vacant. The other half the time, it's got not-so-successful businesses, and we've always had loitering there, crime there, and really, just that whole corner's been a bad situation. I've lived here all my life, can't remember anything real successful being in that corner there since, I guess, the attorneys left years ago, right? So seeing a business like 7-Eleven come in was a good thing because I knew that 7-Eleven had a good track record of maintaining their properties, good management, and as was demonstrated, or not demonstrated, but spoke about this evening, they put their employees through a lot of training, and I think that's very important, and I think that's what's important when it comes to managing the abuses of alcohol sales and crime, which we're trying to stop. So I asked the applicant to make a lot of changes before I would even think about agreeing to this. I originally thought, I was under the impression that this was a high-crime area, although it's not perfect, I see that. It does meet our level, or is below our level of high crime. I needed to see the cameras added. I needed to see more lighting. I needed to see really the loitering to stop. I stopped, the first time I stopped there, I stopped at the Wells Fargo, parked right there in a parking lot, and by the time I got to my car, there was a guy leaning against my car right there. And that's exactly what I told the people from 7-Eleven. I said, "They can't have this." I said, "This is what we've got to stop, and it's not your fault, but I need this to stop." I mean, they're in the Wells Fargo parking lot, not in the 7-Eleven parking lot. And I've seen a lot of the problems that occur there, and that's one of the things I wanted to see stopped. So we asked for cameras because I knew that back corner would be an issue. Cameras have gone up. I saw the cameras myself. I asked for floodlights to be added in the back area, and they've added them throughout the property. The gate being added, that was their idea. I thought that was a great thing because I was complaining that people were cutting through the property, and I felt that the more access that people had to the back of the building, out of sight, right, out of mind, these were areas where crimes are committed. So the gate was added. They cleared the shrubs, the trees, they removed all that. Again, something I hadn't really asked for, but it was their 7-Eleven management corporate that was there and suggested that that get removed. And I think it's cleaned up the corner quite a bit. And then the footpath, that was one of my concerns, because I said, you know, you've got a footpath in the back of your property here. I mean, it's inviting for people to cut through. No wonder people are cutting through, so I'm glad to see that that change has been added as well. I believe it is a matter of convenience. I know that alcohol is available at the Vons there, but I have had people complain to me about the 7-Eleven, and they're not able to get their candy bar and their six-pack of beer, or whatever it is that they're looking to purchase. Most people have come accustomed to going to a 7-Eleven and having that convenience there. I don't believe it's going to add to the number of sales. I never did, but I do believe they'll probably take some sales, but that's the competitive nature of business. And my biggest concern, of course, is the crime in the area. I think having a business in that corner is better than having a vacant spot in that corner. We have other areas of our community, commercial spots, that are vacant, and some of them are boarded up, others are about to be boarded up because windows get broken out, people are hanging out, loitering is happening, crimes are committed in their parking lot. And again, this is a gateway to our city. Again, 7-Eleven's probably not the ideal business to our gateway, but nor is an empty property like we've had for many years there. So thank you, Happy, for improving that corner and doing all the things I asked you to do, and I think you went above and beyond what I asked you to do, and I really appreciate that.
Councilmember Campbell.
You know, really, the question in this item is, it comes back to this. Time and time again, we keep having requests for off-site liquor sales, and time and time again, the applicant says, "Look at us individually. Don't look at the whole picture. Don't look at the picture of crime throughout Vista. Look at us. We're a struggling business owner." Look, I'm a small business owner too. I understand that it's very difficult to get by and make ends meet, but at the end of the day, as a council member that the people of this city elected me to do a job, that job is to look out for the interests of the community as a whole, not one specific location. Adding another liquor outlet to Vista is foolish. We already have the highest concentration of off-site liquor sales in North County. How many more do we need? Where does it stop? Where do we draw the line? The next person that comes up and applies for another off-site license is going to say the same thing. Don't look at the fact that you just approved another one. Look at my business individually. Don't look at the whole picture. Now, we hear a lot about census tracts and crime beats and these invisible lines that segment the city up, but at the end of the day, what we need to look at is the following. Is crime in Vista going up, or is it going down? Are we adding more liquor outlets? Or are we trying to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs in Vista? This council has a fiduciary responsibility to look out for the needs of Vista's community as a whole, not to add another off-site liquor license for the benefit of a few. You know, I have some serious concerns of the facts that we're being presented with by the applicant. On page 20 of 40 of the agenda item, it says, "While 7-Eleven does not plan to sell much alcohol, having it as an offering in the store will increase customer traffic." In the letter here, it says, though, "Although it would account for less than 10% of the floor area and less than 14% of overall sales, they expect it to generate 30% to 40% of the incidental sales without any advertisement of alcohol." We heard the applicant say he didn't want to advertise it at all, you know, and then we have other numbers where it says that it would represent less than 10% to 20% of incidental sales. And then in one of the letters, we have dated October 29th of 2013, it says, "They would install a video security system linked, directed to the City of Vista Police Department." We don't even have a police department. We have a sheriff's department. I mean, looking at the applicant's information and the numbers, what I see is this. An applicant who wants to get an off-site liquor license so bad that we keep getting information of whatever we want to hear to make it sound good. That's a problem. Secondly, Mr. Conley, I don't know if you could pull up the image on page 31 of 40, the I don't know if anyone else noticed this. It seems a little odd to me, but you'll notice in the photo that is labeled "After they installed a trash can and ashtray and no loitering signs," we'll see what appears to be a person loitering in the background.
It's in the applicant's presentation.
It's in the applicant's presentation, yeah. And these signs that say "No" and then "Private Property" are very small. You know, my concern is, adding another liquor outlet's going to accomplish the following: positive for just the business owner and a negative for the entire community. No longer can we say, "It's okay, we're going to add another off-site liquor outlet because you want to add to crime in the community," when every body of legitimate research has clearly linked the connection between off-site liquor sales and increased crime in the community. Now, we can muddy the waters and say, "Well, that study doesn't look at convenience stores. It looked at liquor stores." The distinction is this: there isn't any, in my opinion. In my opinion, we cannot approve this applicant's request, not because he's not a good business owner, not because he isn't trying to get by and succeed in our community and live the American dream. It's because my duty is to the community, to all of you, and that's to say no to more liquor outlets, especially when, as Councilman Aguilera said in a prior public hearing regarding Dollar General's request for alcohol in North Santa Fe, I believe you said something about, "We have rules in place for a reason." This census tract is already at concentration, and as we received information in the past, and as Happy, I believe you mentioned in the last public hearing regarding this item, that when you moved into this location, you didn't want alcohol. You knew the city's position was that you wouldn't get alcohol in this location, and you were going to make it work. Well, now you've come back to us several times saying, "I can't make it work." Well, you went into it knowing that this census tract was already at concentration. Now, from 2012, the crime in this particular beat has gone up. It's not fair to the other businesses that we have held them to the same, held them to a standard and said, "No, we're not allowing," like in the Dollar General case. This particular location is the same test, in my opinion, and does not rise to the standard of meeting public convenience or necessity, nor would it benefit the community. So I make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution denying off-site sales at this location.
Do I have a second?
This has been a difficult issue because we are a city who's trying to help our businesses flourish, and this is a struggling business in an area that has struggled, no matter what has gone in there to be successful. I had a letter when I came to my desk, and I appreciate the students that come to our council meetings, and I know you're here to get community service credit, and I applaud the school district for having that as a part of your educational requirement for graduation because I think it compels you to see how our local government works, and it's at a level that you can see the effects. It's not state, it's not national, it's where you see the effects and the impacts of what happens in your neighborhood and in your city. So I had a letter from a student, and it kind of made me scratch my head because the student listened to the discussion, the debate over the Dollar General store, and the council agreed that it was a good store to be in that location, but because of the, some of the other factors, the crime rate in the area, we agreed that we shouldn't authorize or allow the off-sale alcohol license. So the student said, and we'd been told, it's in an over-concentrated area. It's over-concentrated, and we have a definition. There's a meaning for the term "over-concentrated." And said, "How could you let it become over-concentrated?" You know, now, you know, you have approval process, and you know when it's at the concentration level. Why would you allow it to become over-concentrated? And it sounds like a simple question, but it's because there's always a reason to let the standard slide. And again, I want Happy's store to thrive and be successful. I'm not sure that the wine and beer sales are going to be the key to make that happen. I don't know, there's no way to test that until it's allowed, and a year later, you gauge the books. Then on top of that, the other factor that came to my attention that was troubling is that we have the highest ratio of alcohol outlets in Vista than any of the other communities along the 78 or in North County. So the crime rate... So, the crime rate says it's not a high-crime rate, it's barely under the threshold of being a high-crime rate. And, so this, this is why I've grappled with this. I went by the store, I looked at the improvements, and they're great improvements, and I think the improvements and what's happened are going to, to allow that store to be successful. And I, you know, somebody can give me feedback, but in, in the last few months, I pay attention, because I go by there a lot, and I see, I see cars there, I see customers going in and out, and, and, you know, I don't know if there's a way to measure it, but I think there is an improvement in the, the walk-in clientele there. Again, I'd have to, to see data or hear feedback to find out if that's, if that's the reason. But I, I guess I'm looking at this, at the, the global future of Vista, the Vista that we're striving for, the Vista that everybody says, "We want a, we want a city that doesn't appeal to the lowest common denominator, but the highest common denominator." And, and the studies are, are obvious, this is not something that can be disputed. On the global scale, the more alcohol sales you have, the more abuse occurs, and, and the more access that, that young people have to alcohol. So, I guess I'll have to second that motion. Thank you.
Well, I'll speak next. As I want you, all of the students to know, that overall, crime in Vista is down at the lowest point that it has been in 16 years. I believe it's about 47% down in the last 16 years, I could be, so per capita, it's the lowest it's, it's been for many, many years, the overall, the crime in Vista. Also, when they're quoting alcohol numbers, we have 14 microbreweries in Vista, and, and I don't drink beer or wine, but I have a lot of friends who don't mind having a beer and a glass of wine. So, that's part of the, the numbers that they're quoting you are including our microbreweries, which are, you can buy, you know, browsers and those things to take out. So, you know, we have to look at, if you wanna look, look at, we need to look at the big picture. We asked this man to make some changes in his store, cameras, lighting, and the loitering, and I've been in there to check it out several times, and he's made a lot of changes. And as far as training, they're, they do a lot of training in their store to make sure that minors can't purchase alcohol. And I know that they not only do, not only do they do the training, but also the ABC, we do the training. And also, we have sheriff deputies that have decoys that go out to the stores in, in the city and try and buy alcohol at different stores. So, we've never, and we've never had a problem with them on that. So, the store has a better appearance. If I, if it went out of business, I don't know what I want to see there. It's when you come into town, that's, as long as that building is there, it's, it's the gateway to coming in, and a 7-Eleven is not, I think that's, you know, not, not a bad appearance when it comes into town. I don't think, it's not like the purple curtains and all the things that were there many years ago. So, anyway, so I, I'm gonna be supporting this, but, and so I would offer a substitute motion that we approve, I'll, if the wording is on it, that we approve, let me get the wording. Hold on, let me get the right wording. That we close the public hearing, which has already been done, and we grant an SUP for the off-site sale of beer and wine. So, I have two more speakers, so Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
I'll second your motion. I would like to add, though, Councilman Campbell, you have a knack of twisting people's words and thoughts, and I don't appreciate it. I deny Dollar General, number one, because it doesn't offer convenience, it's a completely different store. If you've been to a 7-Eleven and a Dollar General, they're two different types of stores. In addition to that, Dollar General is going into a high-crime rate area, we're having issues in that neighborhood, and if you lived in that neighborhood, you'd know about those, the crime that's going on. I had a person who lives in that neighborhood come up to me after the meeting and spoke to me about the crime that was going on there. I rejected Dollar General, because they were trying to introduce additional alcohol, which was over-concentrated as well, I believe, into a high-crime rate area. And that was my biggest concern and the reason that I stated initially tonight, why I denied Happy's application, because I was missing, I misunderstood that he was going into a high-crime area. Since then, I have educated myself better and found out that it's not a high-crime area. In addition to that, I feel that the changes that 7-Eleven and the applicant Happy have made, the cameras, the floodlights, the gates, the shrubs, all the money they've spent, have proven to me that they are a responsible business owner, and they will be responsible in hopefully deterring crime in that area. And Happy and I have had discussions, one-on-one, and I know he's heard it from 7-Eleven corporate, that he needed to be more stern with the people and not be such a nice man like he is to some of the, the hanger-outers, or whatever you want to call them, the people that are loitering, yeah, yeah, I mean. So, I feel that Vista's gonna be a better place by allowing this business, and that's why I'm seconding your motion. But I would appreciate it if you stopped twisting people's words, it's become a habit.
Councilman Aguilera, I actually asked you at that point, if you'll recall, if that's what you said at the last meeting. But I would like staff to bring up the chart, Sheriff's Beat Crime Map, if we could. Just to highlight a point when I'm talking about these invisible lines. While we're waiting for that, I would like to point out an interesting fact that the mayor incorrectly stated, which is absolutely not true. When we're talking about the, the alcohol outlets within the city, the number that we've been talking about are off-site sales locations and have absolutely nothing to do with the microbreweries in Vista. If we want to talk about on-site sales locations as well, combined with our off-site sales, that's a totally different story and makes that number increase even more. So, let's not try to water down the facts and make it appear a little bit softer by throwing in microbreweries and, and people that just want to go to the tasting rooms. This is off-site sales, where you can walk into the store, buy the liquor, it's already been refrigerated at a convenience store and put it in your car with you, which has always baffled me just a little bit as to the logic of that. But if we, I don't know if we can enlarge this map at all, but if we'll note where the location of this store is in Crime Beat 307, immediately across the street, catty-corner to it, is a crime beat that has 138.1%. Are we somehow, is that correct, looking at this map?
That's correct. The distinguishing boundaries are the streets, Civic Center Drive in South Santa Fe.
So, using the logic that, oh, this one's not in a high-crime beat, yet, because it's only at 115%, but immediately adjacent to it is 138.1, are we, are we saying that crime stops right there? It doesn't go across the street, it doesn't delineate, because now we're in a, not a high-crime beat? Look, the fact is this, if we add this location, statistics show, on a global level throughout the city, adding more alcohol outlets quite clearly increases crime. I don't, I don't understand why that's so complicated and so hard for people to grasp, but when we put it in a crime beat that's 115%, which by the way, is nothing to brag about, that is a bad number. That is a sad statement, that it is above the citywide crime average. I want a safer community, I want a community that people can feel safe walking through Vista, not adding more liquor sales and more crime. So, I'll be voting no on the substitute motion that was presented.
Just, just for clarification, you can buy from a microbrewery, from our, our microbreweries, and you can take it with you, they do have off-site sale permits. So, just, just for clarification of that.
That, that number was not included in the number presented, though.
Well, that nobody, I don't know that. Okay, so, we have a motion, a second, anybody else? On there? Mm-mm. Then I guess I'll call for the motion.
We're voting on the substitute motion?
We're voting on the substitute motion. Do you want me to repeat the motion? No. The motion is to approve the liquor license, okay. And close the public hearing, of course. Okay, that motion passes. Moving on, we are now at oral communications, and so, I don't have any, do I, tonight? I don't know, I don't see any, there's no oral communications tonight, so we don't have any speakers this evening. So, I have a few little comments here. Last Friday, along with this Unified School District, we celebrated the grand opening of the Linda Rhodes Community Center, which is located on the grounds of the Vista Academy for Visual and Performing Arts. The city was funded with a $5 million grant awarded to the city, and it's a great partnership between the, this Unified School District and our city. There's still time to enter the Civic Gallery's Best Shot Photography Exhibit, the deadline is this Friday, September 26th. Check CityofVista.com for entry information, and the selected photography will be on display out here in the lobby from October 12th through December 10th. Alta Vista Gardens Festival is Saturday, October 11th, from 10:00 to 3:00, and check AltaVistaGardens.org for more information on that one. And a last thing, in recognition, recognition of Rideshare Month, commuters are invited to participate.
May I interrupt for a moment? Excuse me, the meeting is still happening, so if we could please refrain from conversation while the mayor is speaking, please? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, in recognition of Rideshare Month, commuters are invited to participate by replacing their solo drive with an alternative commute, such as a carpool, bike, walk, or taking, or taking public transit to work. To help get started, iCommute San Diego is hosting five rideshare roadshow events around San Diego County, and on Monday, October 6th, from 11:30 to 1:30, you can visit the Rideshare, Vista Rideshare booth in the Vista Business Park at Canary Cycleware, Cycleware at 2471 Coral Street. So, check iCommute.org for more information on that. And those are my announcements for the night, so I'll start down with Councilmember Rigby and see if you have anything tonight.
I just want to say thank you to everybody who came here tonight, and thank you to staff for all that you do for us. And that's all I have tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Coles?
I just want to second the visit we had at the Linda Rhodes Community Center opening, the gymnasium opening, it was a great event, good turnout, and I was proud that the city could partner with the school district in setting, putting, putting that facility in operation. Thank you.
It's a beautiful new facility for the... Councilmember Campbell? Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to remind everyone about the Free Fall Festival at the Alta Vista Gardens. If you'd like to see a councilman cooking burgers and dogs, I'll be there doing that for the Amigos of Vista Lions Club, so please come, it's free, it's fun. If you have kids, it's a great, great place for kids.
It is a great venue, they have great fun games for kids that day, and they actually have a scarecrow contest, they take your kids there and they'll, they can make a scarecrow and they have a contest, so that, I'll be there judging the contest with the scarecrows. So, our city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, October 5th, we are going to celebrate Fire Prevention Week, and that'll be held at Fire Station Number One, which is at 175 North Melrose, which is our main fire station, from 1:00 in the afternoon to 4:00 PM. Gives you an opportunity to go to the fire stations, meet the firefighters, you can get to sit on the equipment, see what they do, see the quarters that they live in. Also, Mercy Air is gonna have a helicopter on site as well for you to visit with, so if you're interested, stop by Fire Station One on Saturday, October 5th. And also in October, EDCO is gonna be delivering the automated green waste carts to all residences. This is a no-charge, so they'll have the automated pickup for the green waste, and that'll be delivered in October as well. That's it.
Okay. City attorney, anything tonight?
Nothing.
How about our city clerk tonight? Nothing either. Okay, in that case, we are adjourned.